Call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, September 13th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members, Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here. Okay, next is invocation speaker. We have Pastor Barb West is here to give us the invocation. If you'd all please stand. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Would you all pray with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the donning of another beautiful day here in Sparks, and we thank you for our city. We also want to lift up this great team of leaders that you have allowed us to have. Thank you for Mayor Gino and for this great team around him. And Lord, the Bible tells us that if we lack wisdom, we need to ask for it because you have more than enough. And so we pray that today you would lead these fine people in your wisdom. Help them to help us to know all of the right things for our city. And we want to thank you too that we belong to the United States of America where we can still pray and open with prayer in these kinds of meetings. So would you come and be the leader? And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor West, appreciate it. If you remain standing for the pledge allegiance, Mr. Driscoll, would you lead us, please?
Please join me. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in itsness.
Okay, next is comments from the public. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards, and I'll call you up one by one. I have three speakers so far. First is Barry Hanson.
Bobby.
Oops. Bobby Hanson? Sorry.
It's okay.
Are you a doctor?
What's that?
Are you a doctor?
No.
Okay, because you're kind of right like one.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Maybe next time I'll take some writing classes.
Thanks Bobby.
On, on what was it, 8/17/2010, I got, my car got booted and I had a classic car, and I parked it in this area. There was one sign that just said "customer parking only," and Windsor Inn is right behind me, didn't say Windsor Inn parking only. I got booted, and the next day I find out I have to come and get, get my car unbooted, so I called the gentleman. He comes out, I give him his $100, he unboots my car. I just found it was a little injustice there because if it would've said Windsor parking only, I would've just not even parked there. And you got the IHOP right there, so.
Okay.
That's just my point on that.
And coincidentally, we are, and maybe not coincidentally, we're going to be discussing that coming up here very shortly, so you might want to stick around.
Yep. That's what I'm here for.
Thanks Bobby, appreciate it. Beth Hanson? Come on up.
My name is Jeff Hanson. I live at 205 Nichols Boulevard here in Sparks. I just want to say the same thing my husband did. We had no idea, there was no parking in that empty parking lot at IHOP. It's an empty restaurant, there's only one sign as he says, I do have pictures, that says "for customer only" on it, on the IHOP part, but on the opposite side of the driveway it does have a $100 booting sign. To us, we assumed that that was for the Windsor, or the name of the parking, and not that empty parking lot. We only had the car there overnight, it wasn't like it sat there for a couple days or anything. We are in financial difficulty, so we're trying to sell the car. So we figured it was hot August nights, Saturday night, good time to get it out there. Well, as you know, we had the number on the car, they could've called us and said, "Hey, you know, we're going to boot your car in 15 minutes." We'd been there in two, we live across the street. We just feel that this is uncalled for, that the man, if he has ordinances, then he needs to abide by them and put up the no parking signs that he agreed to put up. And that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck Walker?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chuck Walker. And I'm here today to thank the people of Sparks for talking to me and their kindness as I've been walking around the city in support of higher education. I'm a candidate for the Nevada Board of Regents District 11, which includes most of the city of Sparks, a part of West Sparks, and the county of Washoe all the way up to the Oregon border. I'm a candidate because I believe our system is broken, and we need serious change in order to have a world-class education system here in Nevada. This morning's Wall Street Journal has an entire section on higher education, the jobs in the private sector, and highlights that major employers seek out top state universities, not only for the quality of students, but to do research partnerships with them. I know from personal experience, everything in this article is true. My son graduated from one of the schools in their top 10 list, and I can assure you the investment was well worth it. Not only did he have multiple job offers from top companies when he graduated, but his compensation is clearly paying back the entire investment we made in his education plus interest. Unfortunately, students attending school in Nevada higher education system do not have the same opportunities today. I want to improve our system so that the children here in Nevada have those same opportunities. I'm not a politician. I have no desire for high office. When I retired recently, I made a commitment to give back to the community, and to help younger people by improving their education, job opportunities, so that they, long-term, can have a better life. I believe I can accomplish this objective through the Board of Regents. Nevada is not an island. It's part of a global, excuse me, it's part of a global economy today. We have seen the need to adapt to change and become competitive in the ever-changing world economy. I believe my 40 years of business experience clearly can add value to the board and help the process of making our system world-class. Once again, I want to thank you and the people of Sparks for the support of higher education and working with me as I walk around the community. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I think we do, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for your time today and for your running for office for the Board of Regents, and coming to talk to the citizens of Sparks today. And one question that I ask, when we talk about changing a system, I ask, what tax increases are you proposing to inject more money into the system, the university system?
Councilman Schmidt, I propose no tax increases. I propose a 35% reduction in our overhead of the system over the next three years, plowing that money back into educational programs in support of education. I believe we're trying to be too many things to too many people at this time. If we focus on the core values of education, as this article reports that the top universities in the country do, we can do a much better job than trying to be all things to all people. We have a lot of duplication in our system, which if we would fix and correct and focus on value, we could save a lot of money and return that as value to the people. I want education to be more affordable for parents and students here in Nevada.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, it was announced by majority leadership of Carson City that they're going to start performing sweeps of local governments, plus diversions of different tax structures, property taxes and things, from local government to go to the education. Do you oppose any of those sweeps or alternate the funding mechanism that funds local government today?
Well, frankly, I believe the legislature needs to be honest with all of the groups within the state, be they the cities or the university system. And once they make a commitment, that they should honor those commitments. I don't support the sweeps. I think one of the problems that the university system has is that it has not offered a strategic plan to the legislature, and because it has not offered a strategic plan, and the current regents have said, "We'll do what it takes to make it right," they're leaving themselves open for the legislature to, again, take money from the higher education. One thing I'd like to point out is that the budget that was proposed by the Board of Regents at the end of last month to be a part of the governor's overall budget project was basically for a 3.2% increase in overall costs for higher education. If you look at the actual money that has been spent over the last four years in higher education, there's only been a 2% reduction in educational spending at the higher education level. So despite these claims that you hear of massive cuts in higher education, the system as a whole has not really experienced those cuts. They've been able to adapt, and I think we can further adapt, to the money we have, rather than have, have to go out and ask for more money. My concern, like yours is here in the city, is that the state legislature takes more money, which we can't afford. I think we can deal with the money we have. Further cuts, we'll have to cut some strategic programs, and I don't believe that's fair to students or parents.
I appreciate that stance, because it's very important that citizens know that if there is any divergence of local funds, you know, that will mean, again, job cuts on the local level. That's police and fire, and I don't know what, what good it's going to do to have a super-funded higher education system and no police officers on the street.
No, and I fully support your position, sir. I don't believe we need to take from the cities for education. Education needs to deal with the money that it currently has.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you again for your time.
I have, Garth, I have you down. Do you want to speak now, or you want to wait till 7:01?
I thought you'd do both.
Yeah, go ahead. You can speak under public comment.
I think I've got enough in me to do both. Councilmember and members, and mayor, just wanted to come over and introduce myself. I'm running for Commission District 5, which is North Valleys. Kind of give the citizens of Sparks a little, get to know Garth a little bit. I haven't had the privilege of being in front of you. It's a nice little cozy session and area, and I wanted to thank you for continuing with the three minutes. Washoe County only can listen to its citizens for two minutes. I hope to change that. Also looking forward to running with the Sparks City Council in the year to come as a commissioner. Since 1965, I came up with my parents to run the 7-Eleven, one of the first 7-Elevens in the Reno-Sparks area on Green Bay. Now I get to look forward to representing the neighborhood, hopefully in Commission District 5, that a little bit of Sparks, but just an important area that I actually lived in and first came up here. And I want to compliment the city council and the mayor for making the hard decisions looking forward to the future that need to be made to deal with what we're looking towards in the future as far as budget. And I have to say that I'm very dismayed at the Washoe County Commissioners at not making those important decisions. They feel that the budget is balanced, and that's as good as it gets for now. My little community that I'll represent, Sun Valley for instance, is looking at probably a $4 million shortfall on property taxes. Next year, this year, $2 million, next year, $2 million. There's a case right now that is pending in front of the Nevada Board of Utilization to where that could possibly happen. You're looking at Kylie Ranch, a real serious situation that's developed recently with entitlements that probably, in all honesty, shouldn't have been granted until the project was shovel-ready. Now it's a possibility of being tied up for years with consequences that were far-reaching. So we need to look possibly for, look towards the 50% property value reductions that we're going, that we're actually seeing, and the consequences and taxes that are going to happen. And again, I want to commend you for your far-reaching look ahead, and I can only wish that the county commission would do the same, they continue to throw bandings on a very, very bad situation. I'm going to leave you with that, and I look forward hopefully to better times for the area. I think the key is going to be in the 25,000 small businesses that are in Nevada now. I think the small businesses will be our cee-ear to bring us out of the doldrums we see now. So we need to encourage small business growth in Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mrs. Elliott. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, moving along, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt? Move to approve. Have a second? Mr. Salerno?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno, to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the minutes of August 23rd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one with one abstention, Mr. Salerno. Okay, next is presentations. Presentation on Sparks Fire Department Youth Fire Setting Intervention Program.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's Fire Marshal Robert King for the record. Inspector Michelle Peltier and myself are here today just to give you a general brief presentation on another one of our public fire safety education programs that we present to the community. We already have given you a presentation on our Project SAFE Smoke Alarm program, which is in the works right now and going very well so far, and we'll probably give you an update on that in a couple months as well. But today, we're here to give you a brief presentation on our Youth Fire Setting Intervention Program. Both of these programs that we have, we've obtained federal grants to help us, help us out with the program, and Inspector Peltier has been the lead on that to get these grants. Our Youth Fire Setting Intervention Program was pretty much initiated fully back in 1994, where we did individual assessments and family intervention right there in the firehouse, and just talked with them briefly and had a small program. It expanded in 2007 to a full-fledged professional multi-agency program that deals with risk assessment and intervention in the entire family. And Michelle will cover a little bit more about that multi-agency in her presentation. From 2007 until today, we have educated well over 236 children and their families that have been involved in this program, and since then, we, to our knowledge, we have only had one repeat offender, if you want to call him, one juvenile that have come back through our program for the second time. So hopefully, the rest of them have learned something out of the program and are moving on to a little bit better, a little bit better life. But with that, the rest of the presentation will be given by Inspector Michelle Peltier.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to be here today and tell you about the Youth Fire Setting Intervention Program. I want to fill you in a little bit about the problem itself, the risk levels and the ages that we see with the program, and our approach, how the coalition is working to stop the fire setting problem from getting worse, but also how we're working to prevent the escalation of criminal behaviors, not just fire setting, but escalation into other things. I think this picture very much speaks for itself. Fire in the hands of children destroys. It destroys both property, and it destroys lives. The definition of youth fire setting is a behavior displayed by a child who is involved in unsanctioned and/or unsupervised use of fire. Now, this use of fire doesn't have to cause damage, injury, or death to qualify for assistance through the Youth Fire Setting Program. It's very, very important that we conduct the risk assessment and the intervention because in the United States, we have 2,500 children who die every year from burns. Now, one of every seven fatal fires is set by a child under the age of 15. We have 10,000 children who suffer severe permanent disability from burns, and 27.5% of all the burn admissions in our country are under the age of 10. One-third of all people who are treated for burns are 0 to 14 years old, and 2/3 of those are under the age of four. Burns are the most common cause of accidental death at home in children under the age of The most common burns in children, for infants, it is scalding burns, 70%, which accounts for 70% of all burns in children. Toddlers are also highly affected by scalds. These can be hot liquids, food spills, hot water heaters that are set too high, chemicals. Toddlers are also very subject to electrocution or contact burns. For preschoolers, we see more flame burns, candles, that's where the curiosity comes in. This bottom group is the group that we're focusing on with our Youth Fire Setting Intervention Program. Between the ages of five to 14 years, we see an escalation in risk-taking behaviors that often involves fireworks and fire setting. Fires that are set by children are one of America's leading fire problems. Arson is the only crime that is tracked by the FBI, where more than 55% of the offenders are people under the age of 18. As far as our local program, Fire Marshal King told you that we've treated 236 children by the time our third year anniversary rolled around, which is June of this year. We have increased referrals 100% in just the last six months. We already have more registrants in 2010 than we did all of last year. Referrals tripled since Washoe County School District began reporting systematically. We now cap the classes at 10 families every month to make sure we give them the individual attention that they need, and we've had a waiting list for the last four months. The majority of kids who set fires in our city are middle school, they're between the ages of 12 to 14, and most of them are boys. Purpose of the program is not punishment, it is behavioral correction. It's a multi-agency program. We offer full involvement and services with social and mental health services, and we rely very heavily on our partnership with the Children's Cabinet. We involve the juvenile justice system, the school district, and of course, fire and police departments. Our approach is both risk assessment and intervention, and the basis is to prevent the recurrence of the fire setting behaviors. We want to stop the fire injuries, the death, and of course, the property damage. We provide resources to the youth and to their families so that they have those on an ongoing basis. It's not just fire safety education, it's also counseling, parenting classes, community education, and anger management classes, and the school district resources. Now, we've identified three different levels of risk for youth fire setting. The first one is curiosity and experimentation. Those are anywhere from ages two to nine, and that's unintentional fire setting. Now, the second or middle realm of risk assessment is for crisis or reactionary fire setting, and those are between ages nine and 18. That's where they actually intend to set the fires. The last extreme is extreme fire setting, and we see those not nearly as much, but between the ages of 11 to 18. Those have intent to use fire to harm or to destroy. About 70% of the people that we see in our area program are crisis or reactionary. And as far as the intervention, how this works is with curiosity and experimentation, fire safety education is generally enough to prevent it from happening again. If they're in that middle realm, the crisis or reactionary, they need not only education, but also referral to our outside resources. If they're extreme, they're definitely at the referral stage. We can't help them, they're not ready to listen to fire safety education until it's addressed on a deeper level. And that's where our partnerships come in and why they're so important to the program. Fire setting in children is often a symptom of a deeper problem. It's communicated out of their frustration in a very powerful and often destructive The kids are referred to us through fire investigators, through the schools, juvenile justice system, and sometimes from parents directly. It is mandatory, once they've been referred, that they attend two education classes. The parent and guardian is also required to attend in order for the kids to complete the course. We give age-appropriate assignments, and we also offer parent education. We hold the kids accountable. That's step number one. They actually tell their stories in front of the group with their parents present. We give safety education. The peer groups, the power of the peer groups is immense, both for the kids and for the parents. We have consequences for them, homework, which they're always happy to get, and community service. And again, offer the network of resources on an ongoing basis with fire safety, school district, and the Children's Cabinet mental health resources. And we're very fortunate that through the federal grant that Fire Marshal King mentioned, we've been able to hire a part-time youth fire setting intervention case manager. We received this grant under the umbrella of the Fire Prevention Association of Nevada. And so I'd like to introduce to you Ed Harney. He has a strong law enforcement and program management background. And Ed's been invaluable because he's doing all these things. He's doing database management, he's organizing our conferences and training for our core staff, he is assisting with the youth fire setting classes themselves, he's helping us to pursue future funding, and he's also tracking and following up on the people who have been through the program and their families to see how they're doing. Nationally, for the standardized youth fire setting programs, we have a recidivism or recurrence rate of less than 6%. Ed's calling all the families right now to track and find out exactly what our percentage is locally. Ed, is there anything you'd like to add? Put him on the spot.
Ed Harney for the record. I come from the Department of Public Safety, I retired with 30 years there, and was offered this opportunity to help out, and I think it's a great program, especially for the city of Sparks. Thanks.
That's all we have for you today.
Questions for anyone? Really good, thanks. Preventative maintenance kind of deal is good stuff, so.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Keep it up. I know it's tough with cutbacks and stuff, but thanks. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Bobby. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Okay, 4.2 is presentation regarding possible revisions to the Sparks Municipal Code, Chapter 5.78, booting. Who's doing this?
Your Honor.
Come on down. Nice haircut.
Councilmembers, Your Honor, my name is John, I'm the owner of Universal Parking Management. Basically, the reason I'm here today is to request the council for a direction of staff to work on the issues of the legislation that's already currently on the books. I know that we tried to do this several months ago, and we had kind of a problem illustrating what the need is, so I'm here today to answer any kind of questions, and present some information to you that would help clear that up. One of the things that we're thankful for is the fact that the city of Sparks did put some legislation forward to clarify some problems that were going on in the past, and I'm sure you all are aware of some of the rogue booting practices that were going on about seven or eight years ago. With the law now, it gives the couple like the Hanson's the ability to come in and file complaints to the city against booting companies, and that's a good thing. We need to have the merchants that are in this industry to be responsible and to help self-regulate themselves so that we don't have issues about booting practices that come up. Now, we've had success in the past as a merchant board with the city of Reno in getting the laws passed over there that are favorable to both sides, the citizens, the city, and merchants. So I mean, I think it's a good thing that we explore that with the city. We developed a system of best practices that ensures that people are not getting ripped off, and everybody's being treated fairly and the same way. And the law that's currently on the books, 5.78, has been successful in the following ways. It's created standards for the industry for licensure, which is very important. It's protected citizens and outlawed the rogue booting practice I was talking about. The folks that were getting booted and the people that were booting them were not identifying themselves, they were charging exorbitant amounts of money. It set the pricing to a standard that's very fair. When you look at what a tow costs, booting falls below the tow prices. It's required the merchants that are in my industry to be very transparent with their financials with the city, so the city has a good look at actually what's going on. And there's the complaint system that the Hanson's use today to present to the council their concern about why they were booting. Now, the law currently has fallen short in a few areas. These are some things that we need to look at, and we need to try to get these regulated so that they, they don't pose a problem in the future. Under the current law right now, property owners are exposed to unreasonable liability if they choose to use a booting service over a towing service. We're not currently screening people that apply for applications. Felons, people with sexual crimes, or habitual drunk drivers are not being screened out to get a license to do this. I think personally, the insurance requirements for booting companies is far below what the liability is. Right now, it's set at $10,000. I think it could be, could be a lot higher. And the signage requirements could be, could be adjusted. The signage, it's a little out of kilter the way the signage requirements are posed right now. And what I mean by that is you have a good law for the size and dimension of the signs, but it might be a little bit of overkill, and it really supersedes what Nevada revised statute requires. And I could demonstrate that if you'd like to see that. If you... If you miss this sign, it costs you $100. And this is currently what's required under the Sparks Municipal Code. Couple of problems I have with it is, number one, you could show movies on the back of it and hide small children behind it, and it's very ugly in the sense that if these start popping up all over town, you're going to have a problem with the aesthetic look of Sparks. Whereas, if you miss this sign, this sign here, if missing this, could cost you up to $300. So it's a balance that's just completely out of line, personally. What I propose is something of this nature. This is going to do two things. It obviously has the same missions that are on the large sign, plus the ability to put more of these signs out in front of the spaces for people when they pull into them. It would allow the merchants to be able to put more of these signs out there, plus it's a little bit lower key, and it's designed specifically for the people that are parked in that immediate area. So that's one issue that's in there that I would like to talk to the city about to try to see if we can come back on those requirements for the sign. It's one thing there.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, real quick. That sign you just held on up, which municipal code is cited? I saw a municipal code down at the bottom on that, real quick.
That's a good question, Mr. Smith. This is currently Nevada revised statute. This is the standard for a tow sign that's been in effect for over 20 years. Under Reno Municipal Code, this is acceptable for a booting sign. And what we enjoy over there is the ability to put more of these up than these gigantic...
I saw R something down there, I was wondering if that's...
That's the Reno Police Department's telephone number.
Okay, I'm sorry, I saw the wrong thing.
What's okay. Any other questions about the sign issues at all, or from anyone? So we talked about the signage, we can work on that. Here's another one that's not on the books right now, is that currently under the law, if somebody calls a booting company and tips them off that there's a car parked somewhere, there's nothing in the law that makes it illegal for a kickback to be paid to somebody. Not that I've seen this to this date in Sparks, but the potential's there that if we don't put that in writing, that that may become a practice where guys are just sitting around waiting for a phone call from people who are snitching on other people. And so I don't think it's ethical. So those are some points. Again, I don't want to get into the specific details of each and every item of the law. There are some things that should be worked on, and with the permission of the city council and the mayor to have direction of staff on this, I think we can come up with a really good working law that will benefit people who want to use the service, who don't want to charge people the exorbitant tow fees, and especially for small issues. If you remember, or if you think about it, booting is mostly used for small issues. It's not going to be used when there's somebody in a fire lane. Typically, if you live in an apartment complex and somebody's in your space, probably 50% of the time that I get calls from residents, they want the car towed anyway because it's in their space. So for the big issues, you're still always going to use a tow truck, fire lanes, most of your handicap zones, reserved spaces. The little issues, somebody doesn't have a permit, their registration has expired, something of that nature, the boot is very handy, and it's a very good tool for property managers and merchants to use where they don't have to charge people those exorbitant fees. Now, it's fallen short for us merchants a little bit here. I mean, I think some consideration should be given for safety issues, not just for us, but other people involved. Now, right now, we're required to be at a release within 30 minutes of the time the person has the money to release the vehicle, and that's fine. I'm not saying that there should not be a time limit, but even Domino's Pizza let go of that rule back in the 70s because it was causing people to speed to deliver pizzas. They had lawsuits, and it caused public safety issues. Furthermore, it's kind of an OSHA violation for the general duty clause to keep people out of harm's way. If they're rushing from one end of town to the other to release the vehicle, it could cause problems for people. And again, I'm not saying that there should not be a time limit, but at least another 10 or 15 minutes on that would more than make up for the time and make us be able to be there in a safe manner, get the person released, and not have anybody injured.
Michelle, another question, Mr. Smith.
You know, I would argue that if you had time to boot the car, the truck, and these folks showed up to get their car, and they needed to be somewhere too, that you have 30 minutes to get them unbooted if they've got the money. You know, it may be difficult for you to get there, but for them to sit around and wait for their vehicle is another thing entirely, so...
Well, that's what...
And I would, so I disagree. I know whether you're in the area or not, if that's the law, you need to be there in 30 minutes.
Well, I would like to...
Delivering pizza is completely different because that was self-imposed.
Well, and I understand your point of view, and again, I want to make sure everybody understands, I'm not, we need a time limit. People deserve to have their vehicle released in a timely manner. However, I would like to talk to some law enforcement people, let's look at, you know, the actual statistics about rushing somewhere in 30 minutes from across town. Is it a safety issue? I believe it is. If we're only talking about 10 minutes or 15 minutes consideration on that, and the person is still guaranteed that if we're not there in that amount of time, that they're not going to be charged, I think we should explore that.
Is your business located in Sparks or in Reno?
My current office is in Reno. However, you know, what I'm talking about is situations where there might be traffic issues, where it doesn't really matter where you're at, you could be on the other side of Sparks and still have trouble getting there in 30 minutes, especially with the construction that's going on right now. So again, time limits are extremely important, and I think that's a really good element of the law that's in place right now. I just would like to see, for the industry, not just my company, but for the industry, 10 minutes, 15 minutes on the other end. Because the alternative is, if I towed your car, you don't have the option of sitting there waiting for me to show up anyway, you've got to go find it. So if you talk to citizenry, if we get involved in this, and we do talk to a few people, maybe the Hanson's, and somebody that wants to put input in it, I don't think the extra 15 minutes is going to be a tremendous inconvenience to somebody if we all are guaranteeing that we have some safety measures in place. So that's...
Are you also in the towing business, or just in the...
I am not, sir.
So that's, that point is moot because you couldn't tow the car.
Oh, no, understood, understood.
Thank you.
However, if the vehicle was towed, I do authorize towing. So if, for instance, a fire lane or something of that nature, if it's on one of my properties, that I'm required to call a tow truck, not boot the car. So do I run into this from time to time where people call me to find out where their car is? Yes, I do. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Adams.
Mr. London, you indicated earlier that you wanted to be transparent, self-policing. I've sent you a couple of letters concerning complaints, one on August 17th, and the most recent one on September 2nd. You have not responded to either of those.
Well, I have the one from the 17th, and as far as the other one that you sent...
And you didn't respond to, you haven't responded to that? No call, no nothing?
Well, I believe I talked to somebody in your office about it. However, I'm willing to answer any questions you would like about that right now.
All right. SNC 578020, on your warning decal, it says, our law says that a release or waiver of any kind, appearing on a warning decal, reporting to limit or avoid liability for damages to a vehicle that has been booted, is not valid. Yet, on your decal, you specifically state, UPM assumes no liability for any loss or damage to this vehicle or its contents while immobilized. Why do you do that, sir?
Why do I do that?
Yes, sir. I mean, the law says that it's invalid.
Okay.
It's no good, but yet you continue to put it on there. Why do you do that?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Adams. If you have a boot on your vehicle, and you drive on the vehicle, and you destroy the tire, and you destroy the rim of your vehicle, and you willfully do that, that's something that you've taken upon yourself to do, is it not?
Sir, I'm just telling you what our law says and what you've done on your warning decal.
That is an issue that I would like to discuss.
The law, our also, also declares that it's unlawful to boot a vehicle unless you've conspicuously posted and maintained at each entrance and exit of a private street, garage, or lot readily visible and readable from the public street into and within the lot. Now, I believe the Hanson's have provided pictures showing that that was in fact not done on a particular lot that they were booted in.
Well, no, sir. Actually, the Hanson's own photographs show the Windsor sign...
Yes, sir.
With a customer parking only sign. In the background of where they were parked is your four-foot-by-four-foot sign that's visible from Victoria and Out.
Those are the four-foot-by-four-foot signs that our law requires be posted at the entrances and exits.
Right.
And that's not at the entrance, that's not the exit. You can see the entrance right there, sir.
Well, does the law states that it must be visible?
No, it says, no, I'm not going to debate this with you, sir. The law is very clear, it incorporates Nevada revised statutes, and it says, in lieu of that, they have to be on the entrances and exits of the lots, which obviously, those pictures, to me anyway, depict that that was not done. Let me ask you this. Do you have a flashing amber strobe light on top of your vehicle?
Yes, sir, I do, and I have a permit for it, too.
And has that been displayed at all times, sir?
Every time a vehicle has been called into the police department, we have to wait 15 minutes, and that amber light must be working. Yes, sir.
While you're booting a vehicle, your amber light must be on. You can be parked no further than 20 feet away from a vehicle that you're booting. You have to turn the amber light on atop your vehicle for that 15 minutes. So are you telling me that you always do that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, one of the letters you have not responded to was from an individual by the name of Stephen Asher. And Mr. Asher indicates that, first of all, you were parked 36 feet away from his vehicle. You did have an amber light, but it was on the dash and not on the top.
Well, with respect to where I was at when his vehicle was booted, I was behind his vehicles when they were booted. With respect to the amber light, I have a permit for the amber light. And, I'm sorry?
Is that the one in Windsor?
No, sir, Windsor was the Hanson's. Excuse me, Mr. Asher was at Lincoln Gardens.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you had your amber light flashing for 15 minutes atop your vehicle?
It is, actually, my amber light is on the dashboard.
So it's not on top of the vehicle, like you just said?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. The law also indicates that it's unlawful to boot a vehicle without first providing oral notice to our local law enforcement, at least 15 minutes before a vehicle is booted, indicating the time the vehicle will be booted, the location of the vehicle, description, make, model, VIN, license plate, state of registration, year of manufacture, and whether or not your licenser agent has any reason to believe the vehicle may be stolen. Now, have you done that with every vehicle that you've booted, sir?
I have, I have a problem doing that, Mr. Adams.
So the answer would be no, sir?
No, no, I call every time to the police department. What happens, Mr. Adams, is that the police department either just tells me the time...
Okay.
They do, when I try to give them information such as the make and model of the vehicle, I am told, well, here's the time, you know, we have to go. And that's happened on more than one occasion, and more than one person's called that in.
Now, according to, once again...
Because I would like to, Mr. Adams, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
With all due respect, I would like for the council to understand that I am almost positive that there's no record at the police department of my calls.
Oh.
And if there is, that's fine.
As a matter of fact, that's exactly what Mr. Asher, Mr. Asher has some experience with the police department, has indicated that their records indicate that they'd received four to five phone calls from a booting company between 4:30 and 5:30 stating that they would be booting vehicles at Lincoln Garden Apartments. Mr. London failed to give dispatch required information as stated in sub-paragraphs B through C. That's what Sparks Police Department's records indicate.
Well, again, Mr. Adams, to be completely honest with you, and I'm not trying to be confrontational, but I have a hard time keeping dispatch on the phone to give them the information that I have to. And I'm not the only one that's experienced that. So I do understand what you're saying, is that I'm positive that Mr. Asher did not find a record of his two vehicles that were booted right by the sign on the police dispatch logs. But it's not because we do not try to give them that information. It's because they seldom have time to take that information.
Now, how about our law that makes it a criminal misdemeanor to boot a vehicle without having the property owner present while your vehicle's being booted? Has the owner of the property, the authorized, who authorized you to boot these vehicles always been there next to you in my case?
Well, in the law, sir, and I mean, we've talked about this before in your office, we are entered into a contract agreement with the property owner, and you have told me yourself that in lieu of the other, that contract was a good instrument. So you're saying that you have a problem with it now, and I understand that. But I believe it does skate in the law right now, currently, that we either have to have the property owner there to sign for it, or we have to have a contract for it. I believe that's right there.
But you don't have a representative from the property, the owner of the property?
Because in the law, it states that we either have to have a signature of the person requesting the boot, or we have to be in a contract with the property owner or a agent of the property.
So you're telling me you have a signature of the person authorized to boot?
We have on file with the contract that you've seen, the signature of the person that we do business with.
Now, have you ever refused to accept a credit card, sir?
I have not.
According to, once again, Mr. Asher, "I attempted to pay with a major credit card and was told by Mr. London that he could only accept cash or cashier's check."
If at the time, Mr. Adams, the terminal or there was nobody to operate the internet, which is what is on file pro pay, the company that I use to process credit cards, if there's nobody available, I will accept cash, money order, or cashier's check, just like it says in the law.
No, the law says that you will accept a credit card if it's available, if it's given to you.
What the law says is that I'm required to present to the city in order to get licensure the ability to accept credit cards, and I do have that. The law also states that I must accept the typical forms of payment, which is, and it states in the law, credit card, cashier's check, money order, or cash.
I have some questions with Mr. and Mrs. Hanson, if it's okay with the city council once Mr. London is finished.
Mr. Smith?
I think we have, we have another question here from Mr. Smith. Are you done with the questions?
I am, thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I didn't know we were going to turn this into Court 101 here and have proceedings with it. I think the agenda items, and I think Mr. Adams has clearly showed on it, you know, through his questioning, that there's concerns on both sides of this law. I know seven years ago when we did this, this was a major undertaking just to get something on the books because things were, not to use the, wear the phrase out, but run amok in the booting industry, and so we put something in place. And I think the petitioner here is here today just to ask for some reviews on some things. You know, the other two matters on out there are legal cases that belong in the legal department and not tried in front of the city council. You know, that's not our jurisdiction to do that. You know, I think it's, you know, the request from the applicant to sit down with Mr. Adams, look at the provisions of the bill. I think there's some good stuff in here. When you start talking about increasing bonding rates, you know, you'll probably start eliminating any type of this stuff. You know, do we or we don't want to have the city attorney's office spend time looking at this? I think that's a question in front of us, and I'm not sure it's, you know, we need to go on trial here today to go ahead and take two cases. Most legal advice that I've always heard from out of our city attorney's offices, we don't talk about these things, so the cases are heard in front of the proper perspectives. And so I think the line of interrogation needs to go ahead and quit. Either we are, or we aren't going to go ahead and let Mr. London sit down with the city attorney's office and discuss these items.
Chip?
I guess my point here, the risk is sounding like Legal 101, and I do apologize to all of those who were turned off by these types of proceedings, is that it does not look as though the current licensees are complying with the existing law. And as I understand it, the licensee is now before you, asking you to relax ordinances that are not being complied with. Now, I would be disinclined to meet with Mr. London right now because I believe Mr. London will be looking, could very well be looking, depending on what the police reports say, at some criminal prosecutions. So in that case, I don't necessarily think that I need to meet with Mr. London unless he has got an attorney with him. That being said, I would advise against looking at the ordinances in an attempt to broaden them or lessen their impact.
Any other questions? Chet, you, I think you've given us...
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Adams, work with us when we worked over in the city of Reno for the same issues. In fact, he proposed the relaxation of some of the rules. I'm proposing more stringent rules on the licensure and the different types of situations. Verbal conversations that we've had with Mr. Adams, he has certainly indicated to me that he had been willing to work with me in the past. And up until this point, I'm a little perplexed to find the change in direction, especially when I'm coming to the council to try to get these things ironed out and to be transparent with the council, meet on a regular basis with the city, with the police department, and the people that are responsible for this law, to make sure that citizens are not being ripped off and that the road booting practices are not getting back underway. I just want to, I just want to say that, because I'm getting a complete 180 from Mr. Adams than I did back in 2008, when he came to Reno and sat with the board in Reno and worked and witnessed what we were doing over there, which was very good stuff. I'm not understanding why this is happening.
So you're looking at being more stringent to get a license to be in the booting business?
Well, sir, right now, there's no, nothing preventing a person who's been convicted of a sexual crime or drunk driving, there's nothing preventing them from coming in and paying the money to the city of Sparks and getting their license.
Sure. So now that you're licensed, how many others are licensed in Sparks?
I've worked with two other companies, sir, that have been licensed. There's a property management company.
So let me just get this straight. So now that you're licensed and operating, you want to make it more tough on somebody else to get a license?
Um, no, no, sir.
You just tell me you want to be more stringent on trying to get a license. I just wanted to be, make sure that I understood that.
Okay. Not from a personal standpoint, but from the fact that other municipalities have passed the same laws.
Okay.
And that I am licensed in those cities, too, as well as other companies. The problems we had seven, eight years ago were people who, there were no background checks being done, people were not providing their names, you had no way to find out who had booted your car, other than hoping that the person would tell you.
Okay, I got another question here from Mr. Carrigan.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to say, I think you heard our city attorney say that he's willing to talk to you as long as you bring your attorney.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, that's pretty much where I, as a city councilman, would like to leave it, is bring your attorney to talk to our attorney and work it out.
Yep.
Because the problem I have is that we have two citizens back here that don't know the law as well as the one citizen that, whose car you booted and brought up, you know, several, several parts of the law that you, you know, that he thought you were breaking. Now, a normal citizen is not going to go through the law. It just so happens that Mr. Asher has a background in law enforcement in the city, probably knows the law backwards and forwards. A normal citizen wouldn't, wouldn't know that. So I'm just wondering how many people are out there that, you know, that this has happened to, that have, that don't know any better, to just pay $100 and just to get the boot off their car. So I suggest that you bring your attorney and talk to our attorney. That would be my suggestion.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sir, thank you. Okay, next is consent items, 5.1 through 5.12. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.12.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.12. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Board of Directors of the Community Services Agency. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Driscoll for the record. The city has one appointment to the Board of Directors for the Community Service Agency. The appointment has not been made for several years, despite numerous attempts to do so. The city's been unsuccessful up to this past of having someone serve. Recently, Suzanne Shepherd expressed an interest in serving on the board, and Mr. Martini, I believe you're recommending her appointment, and this does require council confirmation.
Ms. Ratty?
Motion, if you're ready.
Go.
Move to confirm the appointment of Suzanne Shepherd to the Board of Directors of the Community Services Agency.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the appointment to the Community Service Agency. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 6.2, consideration of possible approval of a request for variance to Sparks Municipal Code Title 15, sections, yeah, floodways, to Truckee Meadows Water Authority for development within regulatory floodway. Mr. Martini?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I have a bit of a weak voice today, so I will be brief. Our friends at the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, as you are well aware, are doing upgrades to the Glendale Water Treatment Plant. If you've been over on the path, you'll notice they're redoing the intake right now. Along with those changes to bringing the water into the plant, they're also doing some structural changes. And as you noticed in my report, they will be tearing an existing trailer down that's on site and putting in a backup generator. The location, the backup generator is to be staged, is in fact in the regulatory floodway. Truckee Meadows Water Authority retained Wood Rogers engineers. We have a statement of no elevation change, no effect. I can go through all the facts and findings if you'd like, but I can tell you I was able to meet them all per the terms of our code, and staff is supportive of this variance. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Martini? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Still looking for a motion. Mr. Solerno?
Move to approve the request for variance to Sparks Municipal Code Title 15, Truckee Meadows Water Authority put construction of a backup generator within regulatory floodway.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Phew. Moved by Councilman Solerno, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 6.2 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, John. I thought maybe we were going into OT there for a minute. 6.3, discussion of possible action on a memorandum of legislative cooperation by and among the cities of Sparks, Reno, well, I won't read them all, but there's a lot of agencies here. Ms. Cluitt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members, rest of the members of the council. Before you is the memorandum of legislative cooperation that the city usually enters into every two years in order to have all of these entities talking together and not hiding anything during the upcoming legislative session. With that, I'll just take questions. This is something that the city usually does normally into into every two years, getting prepared for the upcoming state legislative session.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Smith?
Kathy, I know we've approved this at the regional governing board, and my question today is very simple. Have we ever had one of these agreements since you've been around or, you know, from the council, that one party hasn't violated it during the course of legislative session?
I guess it would depend on your definition of violation. There is actually no consequence if someone doesn't, or if somebody tries to quote unquote "work a back deal." I mean, it has happened in the past that people have shopped things around and we were not, and by we, I mean all, any of the other governmental entities, were not aware of it before they went in to have a discussion.
Really, why do we do this?
It's up to the council to decide on whether or not they want to or not. It's, it doesn't hurt to be in it. It doesn't hurt to not be in it.
Nine years, I think, it's been always one entity has violated it in some form or another during the course of legislative session, when you suddenly, you know, you get an email saying, oh, we just introduced this bill out here, sorry, we forgot to contact you about it. It doesn't, you're right, it doesn't hurt to be on it, but really, what teeth does it do? Because there is no consequences in it, you can do whatever you want to do. And it looks like it's just an exercise of habit. We do it every year by habit, but it really is nothing that, you sign it, file it away, and open season.
And that is part of the discussion that the council can have.
Ms. Ratty?
Look at it as an exercise of good faith, stating our best intentions as we begin a session, and I would move to approve the memorandum of legislative cooperation for the 2011 state's legislative session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'll, I agree with Councilwoman Ratty that for the exercise of faith, for the 10th year in a row, we'll do it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Whoops. Now, please vote. Julia, I need you to vote again, please, I'm sorry. There you go. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
You will be the person signing it, and it won't be coming back before you until October or November, when all the other entities have had their meetings to say yes or no.
Okay, so, so far, I think I've been on three entities that, last year, is it four?
Said yes.
Ten more? Yeah, okay. Ghoul pool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. We like to show good faith. 6.4 is review and possible approval of the Children's Cabinet Inc. memorandum of agreement. Tracy Dominguez, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Whoops, wait a minute. You got a question, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah. Are there three of them you're doing? Can you do them all at, I'm sorry, can you do them all at once?
Sure.
And then we could just do it on an individual?
Do all, you doing the next three?
However you like.
Oh, yes, yeah. Just do them all three, and then we'll...
They're all great things, because people are giving us money for something, so.
Just go ahead and do all three, and then we'll vote on them individually.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the council. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Recreation Superintendent. First before you is, I'm requesting possible approval of the Children's Cabinet memorandum of agreement in the amount of $37,000. We, as a Parks and Recreation Department, have been doing this agreement for 13 years. It's very well streamlined, it's under an umbrella, all the agencies come together, and the Children's Cabinet disperses the funding. And this funding is used for children who may not be able to afford our already low cost of before and after school programming, and we do spend this amount in full every year. So it's definitely needed in our community. If there happens to be any left over, we do get permission to roll it over into summer programming to help those working parents out for summer programs. And I'm not sure which one was next.
6.5 is Shields title sponsorship agreement?
For Turkey Trot, and then there's one for... Yeah.
For the kids' triathlon.
Kids' triathlon is a lot easier to say. We've just entered into, or are hoping to enter into, with your permission, a five-year agreement with Shields to be our title sponsor for both the kids' triathlon, otherwise known as Paddle, Pedal, Patter, which is becoming a huge success down at the...
Did you repeat that?
I have to read it.
Repeat it five times real fast, if you please.
It's a great event to introduce children to the youth, sport of triathlon and to get children out and exercise. If you haven't seen it, it's really fun and a worthwhile event. Shields did provide the little backpacks that we give as part of the registration fee to all the kids this year. So that was our participation this year. And then Turkey Trot coming up will be their first year under this agreement, if approved. I'm sorry, let me back up. On the kids' triathlon, the agreement is to pay $2,000 for each year. The event is held in the next five years, counting the one we just did. And for the Turkey Trot, a similar agreement, $4,000 to be paid each year for the next five years in support of that event and the production costs. And with that, it'll be now called the Shields Turkey Trot versus Sparks Turkey Trot. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions? Chet, we can take these as a group, can't we? Six, yeah. So, okay, no questions. Looking for a motion to approve 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6, unless we have any other questions. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6 as outlined by staff.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Carrigan to approve agenda items 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next, Trace.
Thank you. We feel very fortunate for these contracts and these tough economic times. It's nice that people are stepping forward. Thanks.
Good stuff. Good partners that we have. Next is 6.7, consideration of possible action regarding the jurisdictional representation and funding for the program of regional planning. Mr. Rundle, how are you, sir?
Doing okay. Thanks for having me.
How's things in Yarlington?
No, no fiscal hardships in Yarlington.
Okay, good.
Jim Rundle, senior planner, here to present to the city council a matter regarding regional planning. At the last governing board meeting of regional planning, the governing board chair, Mike Carrigan, asked that it be brought back to the local jurisdictions to discuss the funding of regional planning. Currently, by state law, regional planning is allocated three members to the city of Sparks, three members to the Washoe County, and four members to the city of Reno. The same state law requires that those three jurisdictions fund regional planning. The same state law then distributes it proportionally to the number of seats that each jurisdiction has on the board. So city of Sparks would pay 30%, Washoe County 30, and Reno 40. It was discussed that, at the last meeting, the proportional share may be out of proportion with the requirement of the state law. So we're bringing it in front of the Sparks City Council today for the city council to discuss, and then I believe our membership can take that sentiment forward at the next governing board meeting.
Okay, questions? Mr. Solerno? So we're not voting for or against this, you just want input from the city council?
I think that appropriately, our governing board members are looking for input as opposed to staff.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, just as a quick explanation for the rest that are on, don't sit on the board. Basically, it's $100,000 per person that sits on the board, and we, and what we were talking about at the regional planning governing board meeting was to give up a spot from the city of Sparks, so we could go down to 200,000 and have two, and give that either to Reno, or the, actually, the Washoe County School District popped up and said they may want it also, because they sit there as a non-voting member. And the rationale behind it is, if you take a look at, if you, if you wanted to divide this up equally by seat tax, by assessed valuation, it almost works out perfectly to be 50% from Reno, 30 from Washoe, unincorporated Washoe County, and 20 from Sparks. The only feedback we had that was kind of negative was that they gave Reno five votes on a 10-member board, but five votes on a 10-member board doesn't pass anything, and that would still give Washoe County and Sparks five votes. So if that was bothering anybody, it didn't seem to bother, it didn't bother me. But some other people were saying it may bother. But anyway, that was a rationale, and it would not take away from the regional planning governing board's budget, but it would take a spot away from the city of Sparks and give it to another entity, and we just wanted to bring it back and ask the rest of the council what they wanted to do with it.
And one other caveat, no matter what we do, it has to be taken up with the legislature and passed as legislature. Is that not correct?
That's true.
So the other two entities would have to agree with it also, whatever we wanted to do.
Yes.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, $100,000.
Sounds like a lot of money, when it comes to the, you know, millions of dollars worth of votes that we take in regards to what's happening in the region and giving up a position for the city of Sparks for the future for $100,000 a year. You know, that would mean that Reno basically has control of everything. All Reno has to do is get one vote from the other five members, and they can annex anywhere they want to. There is no, there is no checks and balances, you know, it's already that they, you know, have four votes on it, the highest voting member block in the regional governing board. We give them five... We give them five, that means that they've got, you know, a 50% vote right off the bat. You know, they either agree or disagree with everything you do, or you don't get anything passed. And I think that, you know, we personally pass on this one for right now and wait to see what happens in legislation in the next couple of years, whether that regional governing board is going to actually exist in a couple of years or not. There is one example that I talked to staff about this afternoon, if this combination happens, and that's where the regional RTC and regional governing board have some common members that have been trying to combine the two boards to create one super mega-agency. And, you know, if you do this, and you're going to give the controlling votes to those people who want to combine that board, and very quickly, the RTC and the regional governing board will become one. So, I would be opposed to this. I don't think the value is there.
Ms. Ratty?
I'm just curious if anybody else wants the seat? Do we know? They do?
Well, that Reno hasn't agreed to it. We don't know if they want it either.
So, wait, it hasn't been discussed yet?
In these challenging times, you know, if they wanted the seat, which is one way that it could go, then it's going to cost them more money to be on the board. And, you know, we don't really know, they haven't said whether they want to do that or not, or whether they're willing to do that. That's why we're just trying to get a feel for what everybody on this board thinks, so we can go with the united front to the governing board and say yes or no.
You know, I understand Councilman Schmidt's objections, but I believe, you know, we're at a point of prioritization, and if we can take that $100,000 and put it into our own long-range planning, I would...I think that there's more value investing in our own planning department than there is investing in the regional board's process, so I would support the concept, is my input.
Mr. Smith?
You know, I've been a proponent of cutting the funding to them, but I wanted everybody to cut the funding, and we don't need that big of a group when there's nothing going on. So, I'm still in favor of cutting the funding, but I don't want to give up a spot to do that.
You know, and in retrospect, I think we've done pretty good at cutting back the budget. Each year, I think it's been a little bit less than the year before, and, you know, we can keep going in that...in that direction as a group. I mean, everyone else, Reno and the county, has been looking at the numbers too, and they don't like spending as much money as they do on regional planning too. But realize it's mandated by the legislature, we have to do it, we can't just cut the board like we want or dice it up like we want, we have to do...we have to go according to the legislation. So, I think we've been trying to be prudent with the budget in cutting back like Mr. Smith would like, so...and you know what? In looking at what's been in the discussions at the regional planning governing board, I don't know if there's any traction to do this or not, so it's just hard to say. Mr. Smith?
And I agree with that. I just think that it'd be nice if we all cut our funding. We're mandated to have that organization, but not to fund at the levels we are now. If they all drop the levels, then we'd all save some money. So, but giving up a seat, I'm just not interested in that right now.
Okay, so you got...
You know, this item was be more for the three board members than staff. We were bringing it in front of you for your discussion, so that when the item comes back up in October, our City of Sparks representation will have a sentiment of the City of Sparks City Council's perspective on this item.
So, I guess maybe the feeling I'm getting is to try to save as much money as we can from...with regional planning. Any disagreement with that?
But not cut the seat.
Yeah, but not cut the seat. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So, at least we know going forward, we can be a united front on...at the regional planning governing board, so that gives us a good idea. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, 6.8, consideration possible approval to proceed with the City of Sparks Streetlight Reduction Demonstration Project. That's a mouthful, Pete.
Pete Hertz, art city engineer. This item was presented to council a couple of months ago, but it was not an action item, so I was requested to bring it back for action. Since that time, there's been actually a couple of changes. One of those is that we've actually reduced the demonstration project from five areas down to three, and the reasons for that is because of the tariff agreement for lights under 20 years old. If the light's under 20 years old, it was...NV Energy says we need to go to the PUC to actually request clarification on the tariff agreement, so what we've decided to do is to try to reduce the demonstration project down to areas in wards 1, 2, and 5, where the lights are over 20 years old, to try to avoid that whole going in front of the PUC. We also asked, another change is, we asked the NV Energy if they would participate in the demonstration project by actually replacing the lights that are going to remain with LED fixtures in one or all of the demonstration areas. I just got an email back from NV Energy, they declined to participate, so that actually won't be a change. We will also be working with the Community Relations Manager in regards to the outreach in these demonstration areas, and we really want the citizens' input and feedback to know what they feel about the reduced lighting levels. And again, what we're looking at doing is, any light that's at the end of a cul-de-sac, at a curve in a roadway, or at an intersection, would remain on. The lights that are actually mid-block are the ones we're talking about reducing. And in these demonstration areas, it's about 40 to 60% of the light, so actually mid-block light, so it's a significant savings. And just to kind of give you an FYI and perspective, last year, the City of Sparks spent approximately $850,000 on their power bill for those lights that are owned by NV Energy, and this is just the power bill. We also just received a notice that they're looking at increasing the power for streetlights, or the power bill for streetlights, by 14.41% starting in January. That's what they put in front of the PUC. That would mean an increase to the City of Sparks of about $120,000 a year, just an electric rate increase. And so, this is very timely, that we start looking at, do we want to have these...this light level? So, we're going to go out to the citizens, we're going to ask for their feedback. Again, we want to really know what do they feel about the reduced lighting levels, and then we'll bring that information back to you for...and I think a few different options would be, do we do this permanently and take it citywide to reduce lighting levels? Do we turn the lights back on and leave them as they are right now? Or do we look at other creative ideas, such as an adopt-a-light program like Colorado Springs does, where if a citizen really wants that light, then you would pay the power bill to keep that light on? You know, there's options, and what we want to do is first, though, start with getting the input from the citizens.
Okay, we've got questions here, Pete. That comment about the power company raising it 14% and the big board just really lit up over here. Mr. Carrigan?
Pete, do we have an option of writing a letter to PUC about that 14% increase?
Absolutely. I think this is probably going to be...
I hope you're drafting one as we speak, then.
I haven't started drafting it yet, but one thing I am doing is requesting of NV Energy documentation for backup of why this rate's going to...
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say, is why are we going up 14% when they were low? I think some of the electrical fees have gone down, have they not?
They have.
Yeah, so why are we doing that?
This is their three-year review of their electrical rates.
Well, I know why they're doing it, but what's their excuse?
And actually, the GS1 rate and the GS2 rate, which is our standard electrical rate we pay in the City of Sparks, are going up by 4.91% and 3.56%, and, you know, those are healthy increases on their own, but streetlights are going up 14.41%. So, obviously, we need to know the justification of why, and this could be a red case.
Yeah, and I think we could, you know, it goes right along with, I think somebody brought up a couple of weeks ago about us being, you know, in the top 10 for new, you know, being a place for new businesses, but one of the drawbacks was the energy prices. And once again, here we go with, you know, we're talking at a...nothing in this whole world is going up 14 and a half percent. It's going down that fast, but not up, so that kind of...it's interesting to me that they would do that, so...
As I've gone through the numbers, I actually feel that our streetlight costs are very high to begin with. I thought they were high before the 14.41% increase compared to others. I've compared them to PG&E's rates, and I think ours are much higher than our neighbor to the west, and so I'd like to have justification of the rates as they are currently, much less with a 14.4% increase. So, we will be getting that information, and I will be giving that to you.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think you'll definitely get some input from the people out there when you turn off their lights. What are you going to save? How much are you going to save by doing this?
Well, you know, we originally proposed to the city manager that for one option was to decrease the amount of lighting in the City of Sparks by 25%. Is that feasible? I don't know.
Would I decrease the bill by 25% also?
Well, when you increase it by 14%, and I reduce the number of lights by 25%, you know, I haven't done the math, but, you know, we need to look at the lighting levels. And when you look at a aerial photography, outside the McCarran Ring, it's not so bad. Inside, we really probably do have a lot of lights. The City of Reno is about two and a half times bigger than Reno, I mean Sparks, and...but we have more than half as many lights as they have.
How is it that, I know from DeAndrea, the homeowners association is responsible for the lights up there?
Some areas are by the HOA.
How does that happen, with certain groups are responsible, certain aren't?
You know, that was a decision made probably 20, 30, 40 years ago. I'm not sure when. When a new light, a subdivision, comes in, they have the option either to have the light be owned by the city or be owned by the utility. For whatever reason, Reno and Sparks have always had the lights be owned by NV Energy. So, the developer basically builds the subdivision, he puts in the lights, he turns it over to NV Energy, the developer gets reimbursed a certain percentage by NV Energy for installing that light, but then NV Energy actually gets paid for...the city pays NV Energy for the electrical bill and for the maintenance of that light.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering why any HOA would want to take over the bills.
Exactly.
It doesn't make any sense to me, so...
I mean, I personally wish the city had control of all the lights.
Exactly.
And we were just paying the power bill and paying for the maintenance, because I just feel that, you know, we're paying a very high rate for that maintenance with NV Energy, and I wish we had more flexibility to be able to control our future, I guess, by either turning the lights off or on, instead of having to go to the PUC and work through NV Energy every time we want to turn a light off.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pete, what's our average cost per light fixture right now?
Boy, it's very...that's a very complicated answer, because they have...it's a very complicated system. I've looked around at other utilities where they have one rate, like for 100 watt, you know, high-pressure sodium light. With NV Energy, you have a different rate for if it's on a wood pole or a metal pole, or if it's underground, if it's overhead, you have...it's a different rate for every single one of those, and some of them are twice as high as others. In fact, the one for underground metal pole is twice as high than if it's a overhead multi-use pole. Why? I have no idea, and I think that's some of the reason that we want to ask for that justification, because we have...the rates are all over the board.
What was NV Energy's response as far as not wanting to upgrade their lights to LED? I mean, did they say they just...there was no cost for it, no, I mean, no money for it, or...
They didn't explain their answer, they just said they declined to participate.
What is the cost difference we're finding from a 20-year-old light fixture to an LED today? If we invested the money into that program, what is the cost savings? I'm hearing it's 90% reduction in energy cost.
It's closer probably to about 45 to 50% as far as pure energy savings per fixture. Now, the cost payback, you know, it changes, it seems like, monthly, just because, you know, more fixtures are coming out, the prices are going down, you know, it's kind of like computers, I mean, the price keeps coming down, they keep getting better and better. So, the cost payback, I don't have that information with me, but it's about a 45 to 50% energy savings. The other thing that's going on with LEDs right now is, NV Energy had an advice letter came out, this advice letter came out about, I think it was about a year and a half ago, that basically was saying the detriment right now, the cost payback for LEDs just wasn't there. I think the information has changed so radically from the time they put out that advice letter, because in their advice letter, they were saying that the hours were significantly less than a high-pressure sodium. Well, all the information coming out from the LED manufacturers now, the hours of burn for a light are significantly higher than high-pressure sodium. So, I think that one thing is, I really would hope that NV Energy would start getting a little bit more proactive on looking at LEDs. PG&E, for instance, has pilot projects going on, they're giving you rebates for changing your city-owned light fixtures over to LED. NV Energy has no such program, and actually been very resistant to, like this, to actually participating in LED pilot projects and demonstration projects, so that has been a concern. They don't seem to want to participate really right now.
Sounds like we could need our 25% reduction just in a very aggressive light-change program.
All the city-owned streetlights that we have that are at intersections on the streets are going to be turned over or retrofitted to LEDs. We actually got state money to do that, you've approved that, and we're underway of getting that done. So, the only streetlights we're going to be talking about are the ones actually owned by NV Energy. And I would hope that someday we could have some kind of program to change those over to LEDs, I think it would save the city a lot of money, not only in City of Sparks, but statewide. You can imagine how many lights we have in Las Vegas and other places.
I agree with, you know, a letter to the PUC in regards to this, if we feel we're in the 14.4% or 2% is out of line compared to other rate increases over the same three-year period of time. But I also see an opportunity here that could get a program going with Nevada Energy to put in a three-, five-year program to retrofit all these lights, you know. How do we say, okay, you know, 14% is a lot of money, you know, what are we getting in return from it? Are we going to be here three years from now with exactly the same problem as we are today? Or is there an investment that we can make in conjunction with NV Energy to put a three-year program or a five-year program that we have 100% of the lights changed out in the city in LED? And that's just my thoughts on that. I want to make sure, understand the procedure on how we're going about doing the program. Are we going to the citizens first and notifying them of what's happening in their neighborhood? And if there's an overwhelming response, no, you're not going to do that. Are we coming back to the council, or are we just going to go do it and then figure out what they, you know, how they feel about it? Or what's the process you're taking on this?
What we were proposing is that we would notify the citizens, we are going to do this. I mean, we're going to do door hangers, you know, and tell them, show them the map of the areas we're going to be doing, we'll give them the timeframes involved, that the lights will be turned off, we'll make sure they...somehow we'll mark those lights that we're turning off, so they know their...this light didn't burn out, that it's actually been turned off purposely as part of this demonstration project. Then, while the lights are out, we're going to go door-to-door and actually ask for their feedback. And like I said, we'll be working with Adam Mayberry to make sure we have a really good plan in place, but then we're going to ask for their comments. And I know I'm going to get both sides, believe me, I even get emails now saying, if you don't turn that light off, I'm going to shoot it out, because they're tired of the light shutting in their windows. I get other people, you know, saying, you can't turn that light off, it'll be detrimental to our safety of our kids. So, you know, we're going to get both sides of that comments, and I assume you'll probably get more saying, you know, it's negative, but I don't know until we go out. So, I'll get all that feedback, we'll go door-to-door, we'll get all the comments we can from the citizens, then I'll bring it back to you for action of what you would propose like to do.
Yeah, to me, that's, I think, one of the flaws in the system, is when we tell people this is what we're going to do, and then go do it, and then come back and say, tell us your feedback, you know, you've already said, you know, I'm government, I'm from here to help, this is my plan, this is what we're going to do, you know, having a neighborhood meeting ahead of time to talk about it and say, this is the plan, you know, we want to address some concerns, stuff up front, so we kind of know what our plan is, what we're going to do, because you turn off the streetlights and then start knocking on the doors, say, oh, by the way, I'm from the government here to talk about turning off your streetlights, you're probably going to get some upset people on up there. You know, if you put a notice on out that you're having a neighborhood meeting, that you want to talk about streetlights turning on out, the reasons for it and against it, they are aware of the program happening before you get started on it.
That's definitely an option, if that's council's direction, to actually ask them before we turn them off if they're feedback, we could definitely do that, too.
I think they deserve an explanation before we go out there and do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is a catch-22 deal here, because if it works like it has in the past, you put out a notice, nobody will show up to a meeting until you turn the lights off. You'll have a meeting, nobody will show up, and they'll...you'll think, well, everybody's okay with it. Then you shut the lights off, and then they'll start showing up, so it's catch-22. It's a tough either way, and I'm not proposing either way, but it's a tough either way.
Well, we're definitely planning on at least leaving door hangers on every house in the demonstration area. I mean, if we decide not to ask for their comments before we do the project, we're going to leave maps, and we're going to leave timeframes, and we're going to leave door hangers on every single house, so to make sure that they are aware that we're doing this.
Ms. Ratty?
Couple of questions. What's the length of period of time of the demonstration project?
It hasn't been decided because I haven't met with Adam yet to decide that. We were thinking probably two to three weeks.
Okay. And are any of the areas identified? Do they include alleys?
No.
Pete, one question. With NV Energy not opting to change the bulbs, there's really no benefit for them changing the bulbs, is there? Because it's going to cost them money to put in LED bulbs, right? Plus, it's going to be less energy that we're going to be paying for. So to them, it's two bad things for them. First of all, it's going to cost them to put the new lights in. Second, they're going to be less revenue from the lights that they're putting in. Am I thinking wrong here?
You know, I'm not 100% sure of, you know, the revenue source to NV Energy on lights. I do know that when, you know, the developer pays for a light, it goes into their asset base. Now, are they getting paid on their asset base? As you know, as a regulated utility, they get paid a certain percentage profit on their asset base. Do they include those streetlights in their asset base and get paid? Then they get paid by us for the maintenance and energy? I mean, there's probably multiple sources of revenue that streetlights provide to the power company. But I, you know, I have not had those discussions with them, and I'm not privy to that information, so.
Plus, it's not on a meter, so you really don't know what you're getting charged for, do you?
I don't, but I do know the hours of burn. I know how much those lights use.
Okay, so you can figure it out.
I can figure it out, and I have calculated that to kind of know how much of it is energy and how much of it is maintenance cost.
Okay. The other question about maintenance is, do we have an option of going out for a contract with somebody to do the maintenance on the lights and take NV Energy out of it? Or are we dead in the water and they have to do the maintenance?
At this time, under the agreement, we do not have that option to do maintenance ourselves.
And how long is the agreement for?
That, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask our legal staff.
So it might be something that you might want to look like. Could it be in the future advantageous if we went out and looked at a private contractor to do the maintenance or ourselves do the maintenance? Maybe it might be cheaper down the road sometime. I don't know.
That's, that'd be a great idea.
Any other questions? So what are you looking for from us here? To do the demonstration project? And do you want input on how you want to do it?
I'm just looking for, I guess, guidance from the city council in action on, you want me to proceed forward with the demonstration project? Or would you rather have me, as Councilman Schmidt said, meet with the citizens and ask if we should even proceed with it? I guess I'm looking for your guidance on that.
Okay. Let's get the input from the council. Ms. Ratty?
I am, I think it's a great idea to have, try to have a public meeting beforehand, not so much to ask permission, but to let people know what's going on. I think when you explain to people that it's two or three weeks and it's an experiment and they're part of a demonstration project, and we'll turn them right back on after those two or three weeks, people, for the most part, are likely to be understanding. And again, I think, in my neighborhood, there's a lot, I get a lot more people complaining about too much light than I do not enough light. So I would support moving forward with just that really strong outreach at the front end. I also think the turning lights off path to saving money is going to be a shorter path than the variance and challenges around getting lights turned over to LED. And so if we're really going to be facing 14.41 increase in power, I think we need to have this information before we're able to move forward. And so even if we risk upsetting a few people, we need to know what we're up against because.
One clarification I could ask on that, Mayor, is this, as far as telling them that we're going to turn them back on, because one thought I was kind of originally thinking was, we've turned these off for three weeks. In that meantime, I'd be scheduling actually a council meeting date so that after three weeks, I'm pretty much here to ask you, do you want to turn them back on, turn them off permanently, take this further. If I turn them back on, then I would be facing, if you decide to turn them off, I'd have to pay another fee to turn them back off again.
Okay, well, let me then guess, so we have, A, we have to pay a fee to turn them off?
Correct.
Okay.
I just got the agreements the end of last week from NV Energy, and it's basically a total of $445 for the three areas to turn the lights off under the tariff agreement.
Not a huge expense.
It's not a huge expense, but any light that's under 20 years old, all of a sudden they say is under a cost payback and, you know, and I don't know all the math to it because I'm not privy to it, but they would be asking us for more money to get cost reimbursement of a light that they say isn't fully depreciated.
It's not easy to save money, is it?
It's really hard sometimes.
So the point of the demonstration project is to see if we could move forward with turning off lights throughout the city?
Correct.
So I'm willing to risk the $445 for the potential of saving more, if that's what we need to do.
So I guess the only clarification is, should we turn them back on at the end of the two or three-week period?
Well, I think we can't.
Or just leave them off?
If that's going to be based on public input.
And then try to schedule that meeting so I have the meeting right at the end of the two, three weeks and get.
And you have the input.
And I get the input.
Yeah, we might, you know, it might even happen that we might get positive input. You know, we can hold out for being lucky maybe, too. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did NV Energy give us a list of number of lights that are younger, or newer than 20 years, that we would have depreciation costs and how much we owe on those things?
No. There's 4,967 lights in Sparks. I do have a database now of all the lights. I could figure out, I guess, what, you know, different ages of lights there are. I do believe I have that information, so I can calculate it, but I don't have it available.
We may not even get to 25% as a goal if we have 75% or more than 20 years old and we have to pay to shut them off.
Yeah, that, we haven't determined that yet, but you could be correct. I know most of the lighting, the overlighting, though, I would say the overlighting, and I'm saying that just because there's a, where we really have a lot of lights is inside the McCarran area, which are probably close, a lot of them will be over 20 years old.
Right. I agree with you. But, you know, again, it's, you know, I don't want to pick on one section of town either. I mean, I think that looks bad, and I think it's, I think opening this conversation with Nevada Energy is probably a very good thing, because it seems like there's a whole lot of issues here that we could talk about. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
You know, not to make this difficult, but maybe the hangers you put on the doorknobs could be a return card that we pay the posters on with a questionnaire on it, and they can check if they like it, if they notice it, or whatever. And then if you don't get any returns, you'll know that's how many people will show up to your meeting, too.
That sounds great to me, if that's.
Mr. Salero?
I hope on your notice you put a, some type of explanation of cost savings to the city if we do this program and the benefits, because you will get a lot of notes unless they realize, especially when they know what's going on.
I've written a draft letter, and that's exactly how we start out, you know, in this time of economic hardship where we're trying to just keep, you know, employees and public safety personnel on the streets. This is just one option, and yeah, I agree with you 100%.
Good.
Okay, somebody want to try a motion here, then? Ms. Ratty?
I want to direct staff to proceed with the city of Sparks Street Light Reductions demonstration project as outlined by staff, considering council feedback.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to move on with the demonstration project and the amendments as made by the council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Pete. All righty then, 6.9 is a first reading.
Bill number 2623, amendments in chapter 10 dot 40 of the Sparks Municipal Code to simplify, update, and clean up the language of section 10 dot 40 dot 010 and to repeal sections 10 dot 40 dot 2, 020 and 10 dot 40 dot 030 and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2623. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 27, 2010. Okay, 6.10. Chad, do we need a closed-door session?
I think you've had enough lawyering from me for one night. I'd like to withdraw that.
You would?
Yes, sir.
You really hurt my feelings there. Not. Okay, let's move on to 7.1. 7.1 is a second reading and public hearing on bill number 2622, amending the Sparks Municipal Code relating to motor vehicles prohibiting excessive noise from an electric amplification devices within motor vehicles and providing other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Riley, how are you?
Very good, Mayor. For the record, Tom Riley, Senior Assistant City Attorney. We had a pretty good discussion of this among the council members during first reading, and I am here to continue to answer any further questions you might have. This particular ordinance is proposed by Councilman Ross Smith. It is a type of ordinance that is based on human hearing of noise at a certain distance. The discussion we had previously at the first reading, part of it involved the decibel standard, which is a performance standard that has a lot of drawbacks for law enforcement and was not recommended in a Department of Justice survey. The city of Reno put this type of ordinance into play last month, approximately sometime last month, and they used a 25-foot standard for an officer to gauge the volume of noise from coming out of a car, essentially an automobile of some sort, loud stereo noise, CDs, any type of noise coming out. The particular ordinance, I did a nine-page legal opinion on. It is on the internet, on the city attorney's website, portion of the city attorney, Sparks website. And the, from a legal perspective, I am very strongly convinced that this would be upheld. It has numerous decisions from all over the nation interpreting this kind of an ordinance, and the key aspect of it is that you are regulating volume and not content. That's one of the key parts of this type of an ordinance. Content regulation is strictly prohibited by the First Amendment. So that's the basics of the ordinance, and if you have any further questions, I'd.
I do have some questions. Mr. Smith?
Just make a motion, if I could.
We got a public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, just, you know, since our discussion three weeks ago, did we do anything or research any of the council's comments to look at?
I don't recall any request for further research.
Yeah, there was a request of the police chief that he could answer, and you that if all we do is make one change on our municipal code right now, that it would apply to everything. It would not just apply cars, it would apply to parties and noise and everything. It would apply to all of it.
Well, I didn't have any input from the police chief on that. I didn't recall any specific direction to me, so I didn't do any legal research on it. Now, I can tell you that generally, noise ordinances are of, they're type-specific. We have type-specific noise ordinances for vehicles. They're in the NRS. We cannot amend those. We have, the other jurisdictions have type-specific ordinances for residential noise, some in commercial areas. And, I mean, they're usually type-specific because they involve different kinds of nuisances, if you will.
So I just want to double-check since our meeting three weeks ago and all the concerns the council's put on out, nothing was done to research those concerns to get us answers back before today's meeting?
I think I've answered that question.
So the answer is no. Nothing was done. No matter what the council set up here.
I don't know if the police chief and his staff have done anything or not.
Police chief is not the people that give directions on policy on what we want. His council is. If the council asks for clarification policies, we should have that here today, correct?
Mr. Adams?
I don't recall that.
I just got one last, you know, I did have, I had four phone calls since, for the last three weeks on this item. Every single phone call was the same thing. They don't have a problem with this ordinance. They have a problem, well, why? We can't in the city of Sparks get an ordinance to handle our noise problems. We're isolating one problem and one problem only. So now, if we go out and we cite somebody, we get a citizen's call, they can get cited for a noise coming from the vehicle by a stereo. Anything else is wrong with that car, they can't do a darn thing about it.
Sure they can. If it's visible exhaust, they can cite them for that. If there's taillights out, they can cite them for that.
The noise coming from that vehicle, other than stereo, can't do anything about.
That's what this ordinance is directed at.
Do you have something for the good of the cause?
You know, Councilman Schmidt, we've always taken our obligations to the city council and the citizenry very seriously. If there's a particular legal issue that you would like looked at, we're more than happy to do that. Now, I understood our discussion last week to do, or concerned, noise coming from parties and those types of things, and who the complaining partner, or who the complaining party would be. I think it's fairly well-established that a police officer cannot be a complaining party under those situations. We needed another neighbor to complain, and the problem that we run into is that oftentimes, neighbors want to call and complain, rightfully so, but we need witnesses in order to prosecute. So until we get, I don't think it's as simple, sir, as simply an ordinance change that would address all different forms of ordinances or noises within the city. But nevertheless, if you would like us to look into a specific area, we'll be happy to do that for.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Well, I brought this forward as a specific reason, and I would suggest that if anybody else wants to bring something forward for another reason, whether it's disturbing the peace and not bring it forward, we can deal with it at the same time, or at another time. So this is very specific in what we're dealing with. If Mr. Schmidt would like to bring something else in, he's got that opportunity also. But I think we're just mixing things up here.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it to the public. I do have one speaker card. Mr. Garth Elliott would like to speak. You have three minutes, sir. If there's anyone else who wants to speak on this item, please fill out a card.
Again, for the record, Garth Elliott. I spent a year and a half on the nuisance committee with Washoe County, representing North Valley citizens, and it was about noise. Citizens are very concerned about noise pollution, and rightfully so. This was in regard to motorcycle noise coming back and forth into the neighborhoods of the North Valleys from the desert. We labored more on this subject than anything else in the year and a half, was noise. We tried to get the sheriff to help us with decibel readings, and even though nationally there is a flavor and there is a movement to doing that because it is so defensible in court, you got a decibel meter that says this, you're over the limit, cut and dry. We received zero cooperation, and I'm sensing that's your situation, too, from your law enforcement because of the inherent problems with decibel meters. But that is the way the nation is going, and a lot of jurisdictions are going in that direction. My concern, basically, is it would be nice to get a unified or reasonably unified approach between Washoe County, Reno, and Sparks so that someone traveling through different jurisdiction basically doesn't have to turn up and down his radio. But again, it was a big problem, and we wanted to see decibel meters used because they're very defensible in court, and we got shot down. And my only, my only concern is the fact that we get something that's all-encompassing as much as possible, and I see that's an issue today and also between the multi-jurisdictions, approach it from about the same direction so that someone knows what to expect traveling in different areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for questions or action. Mr. Smith?
I move that bill number 2622 be approved and adopted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Kerrigan to approve bill number 2622. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And the winner is, passes four to one, Ms. Ratty against. Okay. We have an ordinance. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. It was a struggle, but it was a good dialogue, and we got through it. Okay, comments from the council and city manager, acting city manager. Mr. Adams?
Couple of weeks ago, the city council authorized our office to file suit against a building on 1640 A Street. I'd certainly like to thank the city council for its support on that matter. Since the city council has approved that, the house has been cleaned up and fenced and boarded up, and I don't think we would have been able to do that had it not been for your support and willingness to go forward on this matter. So thank you.
And, never mind.
We'd also asked, we'd be reimbursed for our out-of-pocket expenses, and that has been submitted, and my understanding is that that is receiving a favorable review as well.
Yeah, I want to thank them for doing that. That was a good effort. Mr. Smith?
I just want to ask a question, make a comment. I know the rib cook-off just ended, and I know we had record crowds down there. And I saw the police reports talk about incident reports for the entire week, and the biggest problem continues to be parking. Have we done anything on the Victorian Avenue parking solution? Could you answer that?
Would you like email, or we did do some basic research?
Why don't you come down here?
Good afternoon, Acting Deputy Brian Allen, for the record. In response to your question, Councilman Smith, we did look into it. We sent out our traffic sergeant to assess that area between Victorian and McCarron. It looks like when they did the redevelopment project there, there is a bike lane that is on the north side of the street traveling. If you were traveling westbound, it's to the right. That would not be feasible for any type of parking because of the access in and out of that bike storage lane. The traffic office felt that it would cause greater congestion and problems by closing that other side of the street as well, and so we did not take action on it. And I can have Sergeant Dyer contact you for more details if you like.
We have to come up with a solution somewhere. I mean, I know the problem is that once they park there, they have to cross the street.
Crossing the street at intersections where there are no intersections, the high-traffic area, there are a lot of concerns that he did indicate, and that that is one of them is pedestrian safety. Where are you going to walk them? Where are you going to get them? People crossing at mass intersections. Believe it or not, I don't, the amount of cars that we would be able to park there isn't going to solve a 50,000, 100,000-person problem. isn't going to solve a 50,000, 100,000-person problem, but it could help.
How many cars can we park there?
I didn't count.
All right, I just want, we need to, we need to do something about this parking problem, and I don't know what the answer is. That was a solution, so, and I understand there's some inherent dangers.
Anytime we start mixing pedestrians with cars with no designated sidewalks or no crosswalks or areas for them to be concerned, or to cross safely at, we're asking for, I mean, we just had a pretty decent injury, pedestrian accident last night with some juveniles running across the street at a non-mark intersection where a driver didn't expect to see a kid, saw one of them, didn't see the other one, struck him, transported to the hospital. So there are some safety concerns that are there.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
Just following up on that, there was some really creative parking going on at the rib cook-off. I mean, and so when you're sitting there and talking about, you know, the interaction between pedestrians and cars when they are actually parked on the sidewalk in, so is some of that, I mean, are we, were we actively ticketing throughout the entire rib cook-off on, like, under the freeway, or is that Nevada right-of-way? How does that work? Because they're not, I mean, they're not just parking on the street, they're parking in sidewalks, which would be typically pedestrian territory.
They're parking on sidewalks, they're parking on medians, they're parking on everything, and to be honest with you, we do not have the designated staff to cover all of those parking things and handle regular calls for service and provide for the safety of the event itself.
And is some of that end dot responsibility? Are many of the ones that were in...
If it's on a state right-of-way, there are some state right-aways in that area along Pyramid and, Pyramid and Victorian there, that, the dirt lot, used to be the dirt lot there. There are some end dot right-aways.
Is it feasible to ask NHP for some help during the rib cook-off?
We can always ask.
Is that it, Judy? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that parking at the rib cook-off is a problem. You know, I had some calls on Friday that there wasn't a parking space within two miles of downtown, and people were parking past Rock Boulevard to walk on down there. That's a good problem to have. I mean, it's a good problem to have when we look at what that event did for our community, you know, well over 500,000 people attended that event. I can say that Mr. Smith and his buses got one heck of a workout for those six days. There was reports at times, there was over 150 people waiting at the bus stop at a time for our buses, and we ran them the whole time as fast as they could, and we ran two city buses and two nugget buses, and they couldn't keep up. So maybe, maybe it's, we have to look at the alternate parking plans, how to get more off-site parking going. We can't create very many more parking spaces downtown, you know, there has to be some way to get the bus these people. They've taken it now as a very positive thing to do it. I had nothing but positive comments on the busing situation, so maybe that's the alternative, is look at how we can bus better.
Mr. Smith.
My suggestion was to take that extra lane where we have two. What if we just took the lane right next to the bike lanes and then get out on the curb, and then put cones down the middle of the other ones? Then you have traffic going...
This isn't going away, Brad.
Why don't we just shut down Victorian Street all the way from, you know...
We don't have to shut it down. We'll get...
I'm sure our partners at the fire department would probably agree that we still need emergency ingress and emergency vehicle ingress and egress out of that area.
Well, you can still get in, you can still get down the street.
If we shut down the, if we shut down the westbound travel lane and turned the eastbound into a two-way and coned it, it's a possibility.
Why not?
By next September, we will, sir.
You know, and Mr. Smith is right. You know, these, these functions we have down there, these, the rib cook-off is getting a lot of people down there, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, we have similar problems during hot August nights, not to the degree I know for, I'm very familiar with several of the red vendors, and they were up 40% every night in what they did. I mean, it was incredible, incredible down there. On Saturday, they did 75% more business this year than they did last year. So, I mean, it was an extremely popular event this year, and parking has been a problem the 18 and a half years that I've been involved in the rib cook-off.
Yeah. And police department did a great job down there.
So I will continue to have our traffic section look into this.
The other thing is if we, the other thing is if we ever get downtown redeveloped, we got a whole nother set of problems coming for events, so. Anyone else, comments?
One more.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to congratulate the fire department on their Fill the Boot campaign. It looked like they were very busy during the rib cook-off and elsewhere in town.
One other thing while I'm at it, I want to thank the Sparks Fire Department and the Sparks Police Department for being part of the Iron Nation 9/11 Never Forget, 9/11 Run Motorcycle Run. They had over 1,000 motorcycles down at Cottonwood Park on Saturday. It was a great event, and I want to thank the Iron Nation for doing it again and raising money for families of military people that are killed or maimed or whatever in the war. So I want to thank them for that. Did a great job again. Anyone else? Seeing no further business, we're adjourned.